So start off, what we're going to talk about tonight, 94 million. That's a really big number, okay? Why now? Needs versus wants. Who determines what's a need versus something that's just nice to have? Why are certain things in this bond issue? Safety, security, and accessibility. For me personally, that's what this comes down to. We'll take a look at that. Keeping neighborhood schools viable. An easy solution to something like this would simply build a really nice, big mega school, close down all the elementary schools, and ship all the kids to one or two schools. But that's not what the community of Hays wants. Hays likes community schools, so we need to find a solution that keeps those schools open and viable. In my opinion frankly, this bond is overdue. We'll talk about some details there. Falling behind similar districts that have done multiple bonds over the years. The cost implications for homeowners in the 489 district. And lastly, we'll take a look at the ask, what's going to be in that bond. To start off, why are we doing this now? Frankly, we're very, very far behind in terms of accessibility, security, safety. None of the Hays schools were built with engineered storm shelters in mind. It just wasn't a thought when most of the schools were built back in the 40s and 50s, sorry, the 50s and 60s. ADA wasn't allowed back then. Special ed students normally weren't included in the mainstream education process 50 years ago. So those are all issues that this bond addresses. None of the schools in Hays have any physical features to deny access at their entry points. Right now, you can walk into any Hays school with anything that you wanted. If you wanted to come in with guns, with as much ammunition as you can physically carry on your body, you can do that. There is not a physical barrier to stop you in any school. This bond addresses all three of those issues as quickly as can be done. Keeping neighborhood schools viable. When this Facilities Needs Committee stood up a few years ago, they had engineers that went through and looked at the physical condition of all the schools. And they said, you know, the bones, the walls, the roofs, everything's in pretty good shape. It's the innards, it's the plumbing, the electrical. The technology frankly, in some of the buildings, has really fallen behind over the years. This bond again, keeps those neighborhood schools open and viable, but it replaces what needs to be replaced, HVAC, things like that. Lastly, it's very overdue. 489's last construction bond was back in 1977, okay? That was for Hays High School, and it was in the amount of about $5.5 million. There was a 489 bond led back in 1993 that primarily went to the Kennedy HVAC system, and that's I think the year that they also built the cafeteria, the lunchroom at Hays High School, and a few other additions at Hays High School. But that's basically it. What's dedicated to maintenance out of the school's budget? Dean, what is your budget?
For the...
For the district, 489?
The total budget is about $52 million.
$52, and the portion that goes to maintenance?
Is less than $3 million.
Under $3 million. So $3 million a year to maintain eight buildings, some of which are 90 years old. It can't be done. It just is physically impossible. And so, as things break, they don't get replaced. Electrical backlog, masonry, plumbing, et cetera, is building up at the rate of about $500,000 a year. And when you see the size of the accrued maintenance that's already there, it's pretty staggering. Bottom line, the bond seeks to create a modern learning environment that Hays can use for decades to come. Needs versus wants. You see a lot of speculation on media and social media as far as who came up with this list of what gets fixed in this bond. It's the school board that just, you know, is sitting back and dreaming up all these crazy ideas. It's not. It's actually been a very thoughtful process that started back in 2012. It was a mix of community members and at the time, board members, who went through for two years. Every week, they met. They would go visit schools. They looked at every single boiler in the district. They looked at every single HVAC system, the lighting, the plumbing, the electrical. They talked to engineers, building administrators, they talked to teachers, they talked to parents at the parent councils in the schools. They're the ones that came up with the list of needs versus wants, okay? So if there's anything on this bond issue that people say, well, that's not really necessary, it's nice to have, these are the folks that looked at it and said, yeah, that really is a need, and that's why it's in this bond package. Initially, they recommended $108 million in expansion and maintenance and upgrades. Basically, that was kind of floated around, and the voters said unofficially that that's way too much. So it was cut back to $100 million. Still too much. So this board has gone and eliminated things like the upgrades at the Rockwell Center. All the admin functions basically have been stripped out of this bond. And what remains is the 94.035 million that's in this ask. Couple of questions. This is interesting. Last month, the Hays Chamber of Commerce did a survey of its members asking, what's the number one thing that new hires cite when they make the decision whether or not they will move to Hays to take a job? Any guess? Quality of schools, number one. 74%. A very distant number two was the reputation of the community. You would think naturally it would be home prices or something like that. That figured way down, even below reputation. Schools is number one. That's why this is important. The Docking Institute in Fort Hays did a pre-primary, or actually a pre-conquest survey last month as well, asking a question. Funding for Kansas schools should... 70%, I'm sorry, 77% said it should go up. That's pretty telling. Within your district, funding should increase 63% of voters. Now again, this is a statewide poll that's not necessarily indicative of Hays, but it gives you an idea that the Kansas residents value their schools, and certainly Hays employers as well. Anybody know what that is? Greensburg? As you can see, the bottom would show you that this is Plaza Tower Elementary, Moore, Oklahoma, May 2013. On that day, they had seven kids killed in that building, and 70 of them were hospitalized. Prior to 2013, the tornado drill for Tower Elementary and trash for all the Moore schools was exactly what we use here in Wilson, in this building. Go out in the hallway and duck in cover. And if you look in the picture, I mean, you're below skylights in terms of tornado safety. That's about the worst thing you can possibly do. But frankly, in this building, that's all you can do, because it was built before tornado shelters were even a thought. And everybody says, well, we live in Ellis County, we haven't had a tornado here in 50 years. I looked it up, not true. National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration says since 1950, we've had six tornado incidents in Ellis County. Russell County, just to the east of us, has had far more. So we are not the tornado leader in Kansas, but to say it never happens here, doesn't fly. It happens here, okay? And it happens a lot. And right now, that's with every single kid. With the exception of Hays Middle School, that's basically how the kids ride out of storm in Hays schools. We can do a lot better than that. Right now, only students at Hays Middle School have access to an engineered storm shelter. And that's just recently, within the last five years. I think it was a FEMA grant that came and helped pay for a big chunk of that. We need to do better. So again, today, about one in four kids or staff member has some kind of access to a shelter. This is what we'd like to see. And when we get to the schools pages, you'll see this. For all of the elementary schools, what this bond would do would add an engineered storm shelter that also doubles as a gym. The schools need gym space as well. We certainly need storm shelters. This gives you both. And this is an example of the kind of shelter that you would see. It's concrete walls with concrete roofs. And if you've ever seen these things pieced together, it's like a jigsaw puzzle. These big concrete slabs are crammed in, they slide together, it's a very durable structure. And that's again, what this bond would bring. Safety and security. Here's another example. We have completely unsecured entrances. This happens to be at Hays Middle School. The door would be right over in this area. You can walk right in, again, with as much of anything on your body that you want to do, and get right into the school. You could hit two or three classrooms before the folks in the office, even though what's happening, because they can't see you, okay? They just have this one little doorway, and that's their only vision as far as who's coming and going from that building. This bond would set up a more positive influence control situation at each school, to where you'd have dual doors. You have one door that enters, you come into the enclosed space, you basically have to sign in, produce an ID while you're at the school, and then the office has to buzz you in, okay? So no more simply walking in to the doors. It would also add cameras at each of the doors, any of the entry and exit points in the school. So you could have somebody in the office, again, whoever's responsible for the door at that time, could look at the cameras, make sure nobody props open a door for ventilation or something like that, and leaves a unauthorized access point. Lastly, accessibility. This is what we have today in Hays schools, and it's kind of sad. Most of the schools, someplace in this room for example, has stairs, okay? And for people in wheelchairs, that's a huge obstacle. Another example is at Lincoln Elementary, the cafeteria for the school is in the basement. So if you have somebody that has mobility issues, they either have to be carried down, or their meals have to be carried up, and they have to eat separately. Not ideal. Special ed offices in all of the buildings, none of them were purpose-built. None of them were built for the needs or for the space requirements of people who might have some kind of mobility limitations. In some schools, it's as simple as, hey, it was where we used to store chairs in a closet, move those out, put a desk in, and now it's the speech path for this office. It's not ideal. This bond would create new, purpose-built special ed spaces in basically all of the buildings, and bring us into full ADA compliance, including elevators at Lincoln and Washington Elementary. And again, that's what ADA is all about, is to give people with any kind of disadvantage at least the access, the opportunity for full participation. Deferred maintenance. This is a big chunk of the bond, as you'll see, and it's pretty staggering, the deterioration that you see when you look around at Hays schools. Hays High School, again, the youngest school in the district, and this is the best one in terms of age, and it's got some of the worst issues. You see over here, water penetration through the ceiling, and once you have that, it's not just as simple as stripping off and putting a new roof on, it's everything underneath it. Hays High School, corrosion at the entries. This is an example of a corroded plumbing pipe. I'll pass this around. Marty Straub, the principal at Hays High, reports that they're having these types of blowouts pretty frequently now. And again, that's just a plumbing pipe, a plumbing fixture from the youngest building in the district. You've got masonry where the bricks have popped out or need to be re-cut. You've got concrete work where over the years, salt has gotten down in there, and ice and water, and it's just popped the concrete out. It's no longer safe. Rusty valves in mechanical rooms, rusty fixtures in the bathrooms, pretty much every building. A lot of outdated lighting fixtures. And that's a real problem, because what you do is you resort to cannibalization. You can't find ballast like this. They're no longer made. Bulbs are actually becoming an issue as well, certain types of fluorescent bulbs. So all of these things need attention. And again, they're all addressed in the bond. Okay. 94 million, where does it go? The biggest chunk by far is for expansions, primarily for special ed expansions, for multipurpose/storm shelters/gymnasiums in all the schools. Safety and security, the Hays High School auditorium. All the buildings, we talked about the storm shelters that were for gyms. Hays High is a little bit different. The intent for Hays High is to give it a brand-new auditorium, an 800-seat, basically state-of-the-art auditorium that you can use during the daytime for assemblies, for plays, for community meetings, anything like that, but also doubles as the storm shelter for the school. The nice thing about it is, 900 kids, you can get in and out of that room pretty quickly from anywhere in the building. And then of course, secure building entrances at all of the buildings. Deferred maintenance, about 19% or $18 billion would go to those plumbing, to those lighting issues, the electrical issues. And then renovations, that's where, and you'll see it in the building slides, where you're taking what was once, say, a gym space at Olafland, and because Olafland's getting that new gym and storm shelter, it's now becoming a dedicated cafeteria and a kitchen, or maybe it's being converted to a classroom space. Renovations, 17%. And then you've got some smaller chunks, technology and equipment, about $2.6 million for furniture as well. If you're building all this space, you've got to put something in it. Hays High receives a pretty good-sized technology addition, and then the equipment that goes in there. Site improvements, there's a few places that would get new sidewalks, new parking areas. Olafland in particular is earmarked for a new drop-off and pickup point, and a little spur road that goes behind the school on property that the district owns. And if you've ever been around Olafland at 3 o'clock, it's probably not the place in Hays you want to be. So that would remedy that congestion issue there. So that's kind of what a breakout of the bond looks like. Let's take a walk and look through all the schools and see how it impacts the community. Hays High, again, is the baby USD 489 at a rank 37 years old. 30% of this bond would go towards Hays High, $28 million. The biggest chunk of that, $8.5 million, would be for that auditorium/storm shelter that we talked about. You see that right here. The admin section is currently here. That would become classrooms. The admin section, the attendance folks, the secretaries would move to the front, giving them positive visual control of both of the entrance points here and here. 2,000-seat gym, this is the one you probably hear the most about from people, well, but Hays High doesn't need another gym. Actually, they do. If you've gone into Hays High for any kind of awards presentation, for senior night, for some of the basketball games, or a tournament, or when we get the opportunity to host events like Special Olympics or state wrestling tournaments, that place is packed. I'm not sure what the seating capacity is, but it's far less than 2,000. This would give the school a second much-needed gym in the student commons area, $6.7 million. Plumbing and HVAC, $6.6 million. And then the tech classrooms, the new addition out here in the industrial arts part of the school, $4 million. You can't see it down here, the Hays High has a student capacity of 1,100. I think we're just under 800 right now. So there's room to grow. It's not that Hays High is undersized, but it's not built for the needs that Hays High has today, and certainly not going into the future. So that's why 30% of the bond is focused on Hays High. Again, part of it's just economies of scale, you've got so many students, but there's a fair amount of work that needs to be done there. Hays Middle School, 54 years old, would give 20% of the bond, $19 million. Nearly $6 million of that goes to the gym, to the wrestling room and locker rooms that's over here. Again, you hear the argument, Hays Middle doesn't need another gym. And Dean, if you could talk a bit about some of the scheduling conflicts that we see right now in Hays.
One of the, one of the big issues are, if you have middle school kids that are out for mini-activity, the boys practice typically at 6:00 in the morning. Either at the middle school gym, or during wrestling practice, they're out at the high school at 6:00 in the morning. When we have gym class, there's a mat that comes down and divides the gym up into two sections, boys on one side, girls on the other, and it is absolutely packed. It isn't, it isn't an issue of, oh, we just want another gym. It's the academic side of it. Practice, 6:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon or later, so most of the kids get out, is a long, long day. And Michael talked about the cafeteria, but a lot of those...
This is the office right now. All of this area would become a special ed dedicated area. This is currently grass, the front of the building cuts off there. Expanded cafeteria and kitchen area, $2.3 million. Capacity of Hays High was built originally for 768 students. They're under that right now, but in the coming years, in the next five to 10 years, there is going to be a little population wave rolling through Hays High, and that is going to push it over that 768 capacity. So again, this, the addition of these extra spaces, if it's bad with 768, it's worse with 868, trying to run those kids through the gym every day. Roosevelt, 49 years old, built in 67. $14.3 million of the bond would go to Roosevelt, that's about 15%. Roosevelt doesn't quite double in size, but it grows significantly. A big chunk of the back of the school here is to be renovated for special ed. Additional classrooms, I can't, 12 of them with restrooms over here becomes a storm shelter. This is one of the schools that doesn't have the gym as the storm shelter, but it does add a significant amount of classroom space. There is a new gym for Roosevelt, because the current gym is to become a cafeteria, a music classroom, and a kitchen space along with renovated restrooms. There's also a parking expansion for faculty and visitors here. Capacity as Roosevelt currently stands is 360, and when you look at the enrollment at Roosevelt, it's well over 400 today. You try to, again, project where it's going to be in five years, it's well north of that. So Roosevelt certainly is one that's feeling a space constraint. Wilson, built in 59, $10 million, 11% of the bond goes there. Cafeteria and storm shelter, $3.6 million. The special ed addition, which right now is open, $3.1 million. Deferred maintenance, 2.5, and the entry, again, with the security features, $357,000. Wilson has some minor issues in terms of capacity, not as bad as Roosevelt's, but again, looking into the future, it becomes a bigger issue. Lincoln Elementary, 91 years old, which I believe makes it the oldest in 489, would get $7.8 million. Most of that, not surprisingly, is for deferred maintenance, problems that already exist with HVAC, with lighting, with windows, et cetera. The new gymnasium and storm shelter, this currently is Lincoln's gym, that would become dedicated cafeteria and music education space, and things like that, that would help with space a bit as well. Olafland, 55 years old, $7.4 million, 8% of the bond would go to Olafland. $2 million goes to the cafeteria and storm shelter right here. This is Olafland's current gym. $2 million to deferred maintenance, and then a whole new special ed addition on what is currently grass on the north part of the building, $1.16 million. And lastly, as we talked a little bit about, the drop-off and pickup point here on Victory Road would entail building a new road that connects out here to 12th Street. That would take a lot of pressure off of pickup times at Olafland in particular. Washington Elementary, I guess it's not called Washington anymore, I still think of it that way.
It's Washington Building.
Building, early childhood connections, basically head start. 1% of the bond, just over $1 million. A quarter of that is for an elevator. Again, it's a multi-floored building, and for a way to get kids up and down if they're mobility impaired. And then 3/4 of a million to deferred maintenance, and the things you would expect to see in a 90-year-old brick building. Capacity was, it's a very small school for 120, it's currently 150-ish, but again, they're not all there at the same time. They stagger throughout the day, so space isn't, you know, crowding isn't necessarily an issue at Washington. So a couple of fun questions. Who was president when 489 passed its last construction bond? This will give you a sense of how long it's been. Some of you probably weren't alive when this happened. Jimmy Carter was the president when we did our last construction bond. $5 million, $5.5 million for Hays High School. When was the last USD 489 bond issued? 1993, again, primarily for Kennedy HVAC, the Hays High lunchroom additions, and then for some other district repairs. The last 489 bond payment made, 2009. That's when those Kennedy bonds paid off. So for eight years, we've had no car payment, basically. We've been putting nothing in towards maintenance, other than the sliver of the budget that's dedicated to that. So again, in my estimation, I look at this as we are really trailing other districts. And when you look at the other districts, 4A, 5A schools on a chart, it really bears that out. Now, I'm a very no-tax Republican by nature, and I look at that and I say, wow, zero, that's great. And you know, if we're at the bottom of the scale in terms of total mill levy, that's great. It's a double-edged sword in Hays, because even though you have a low mill levy, your valuation is high. So when everybody says our taxes are high, it's because we're blessed, in a sense, with very high valuations. Not all these other areas up here necessarily have that, but again, without that bond going towards dedicated maintenance and upgrades, we are definitely falling behind the curve. Again, the statement you often hear or read about, we're overtaxed already. Be that as it may, our mill levy is actually the lowest it's been at any point in the last 25 years. We're down now to 49, it goes off the screen there. But if you look historically at where we've been, back when those other bonds paid off, this is about the time when the Hays High bond from '77 would have paid off, took the new bond in '93, and then that slowly paid off as well. You see that actually we're in a pretty good place right now in terms of mill levy. Another interesting fact, in Hays and like most other Kansas cities, the parks and rec gets their funding attached to the school board, I'm sorry, to the school mill levy. So out of that 49, that's the mill levy dedicated to 489, about 3.2 of that goes to Hays rec. So on this slide, 46.241, that's the portion that goes to 489. The other three points go towards Hays rec and their operations. So if this bond, which is coming up on the ballot in June 7th, is to pass, it's going to pass in one of two ways. The volunteer committee went out and got 1,600 signatures from voters to put a sales tax question on there. Currently, everybody knows that we did a sales tax vote a couple of years ago for renovations down at the courthouse, the jail, the new county EMS building. We agreed to half a percent sales tax for several years to pay those projects off that would expire in 2018. What this question does is it would keep that half percent sales tax on, starting in 2018, for another 10 years to help pay off this bond. It's estimated that it would raise somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million a year, so in 10 years, conceivably, it could pay off $30 million or more of this bond. In Hays, as you know, we have a very high pull factor, given the interstate and where we're located in northwest Kansas. Frankly, I love the idea of a sales tax. If I go to Salina or Wichita and get a hotel room, there's always a little addition on the bottom of your bill that goes to pay off for their schools, or their arena, or some other project. You know, we're always paying everybody else's taxes. Why not let some of the guests in Hays help pay for our infrastructure? So again, if the bond and the sales tax question pass with a yes vote, this is the impact on the mill levy. You would go, again, from that 46.2 up to 57.7 for the first 10 years or so, when it would jump to 65. The reason for that is the bond would be led into issues. You can let a bond once in one big chunk, or you can do it in pieces. And in this case, in this scenario anyway, it's in two different issues. The other way it could pass is if, for some reason, that question doesn't make it on the ballot, or if the voters turn that question down. And then it's up to the property owners in the 489 district to pay that through property taxes with the mill levy. That would have an impact of about $27.60 on a $150,000 home, $27.60 a month. If the sales tax question were to pass, that gets reduced to $16.53 a month on a $150,000 home. So the difference between the property tax and the sales tax is pretty significant when you add that up over the period, over the life of the bond, 20 years. I'm going to back up a step. There's one little thing that, in putting this all together, this exercise, I found out that really kind of gets me as a Kansas taxpayer. The state of Kansas has a formula. Some districts that pass bonds, the state contributes money to pay off that bond, 38%. And I'll give you an example. Last year, voters in Salina approved a $105 million bond. Voters in Mays, in West Wichita, and you guys go to Mays, you've been to Mays and driven up and down, 21st and Mays and the mall and all that, passed a $70 million bond. In both of those cases, the state of Kansas ponied up 38% of that cost because of the way they're valued. And let me give you the reason why. Hays, in the 489 catchment area, has an assessed value of $300 million. That's what assessors deem all the property in 489 to be worth. In the Mays district, it's $377 million. The difference is Mays has 8,000 students, Hays has under 3,000. So when you divide that 377 over 8,000 students, you arrive at a number that qualifies for 38%. When you take our 3,000 students and divide into that the $300 million, you're considered a wealthy district, a rich district. We don't qualify for any state aid. That's, it doesn't seem fair to me, especially if you drive around Mays or Salina and look around, but that's the reality. and look around, but that's the reality. So if anything, I hope you come away from this presentation thinking that, yeah, there really are some legitimate needs and some very pressing needs in the school today. And my answer to that is, it's up to us to fix it. We can't look to the state of Kansas for help. First of all, they're broke. They can't pay attention. They certainly can't pay for the repairs that the school needs. And even if they could, they wouldn't because we're considered a quote-unquote wealthy district. It's a really big number, 94 million. But it's gotten that way because we've put no money, basically, towards maintenance in 30-plus years. So the ask, I would ask three things of you if I could. First is that you attend the city council meetings on March 17th and March 24th to get that sales tax question on the ballot. Ideally, we would have that on this June 7th ballot at the same time we do the, the bond question. Second is to stay informed and inform other 489 voters of what you've seen and heard tonight and what you've seen walking around our schools. Include your friends and neighbors both in and out of the city limits because, again, 489's catchment area extends beyond the city limits. Excuse me. But also, talk to your friends and neighbors, people that you go to church with, from Holy Family, from TMP, because they've got a stake in this too. I was kind of surprised when you look at how the two districts are interwoven. 489 provides a lot of transportation support to TMP for some of their far-flung students in terms of special ed, in terms of gifted and talented program. There's a lot of cross-pollination between the two entities there. TMP is gracious enough to allow us use of their property at Olafland to, to get students in and out of the school every day. So also, there's, there's crossover with the, with the gyms, with sports teams, and potentially, there's a lot more possibility there when you look at the auditorium and for plays that both schools do. So this isn't just a 489 issue. This is really a Hayes issue and an Ellis County issue because, again, our boundaries go beyond the city boundaries. And lastly, and most importantly, I would ask that you look at the facts, arrive at your decision, and hopefully, you'll join me in voting yes. Again, it's, it's a very tall order, and I hate taxes probably more than anybody. But what is your option to get this done? There really is no other option than the people of Hayes to, to make this happen. Stay informed. This is something that's a little bit in flux, but the board has discussed at a couple of their work sessions, the possibility of separating the two gyms, the Hayes High School gym and the Hayes Middle School gym, making them a separate question. So possibly, voters might have the option of saying, yeah, I want to vote yes on the 84 or 85 million package that doesn't include the gyms. And if you want the gyms as well, that's going to be a second question for $8 million. Okay, that's the way Mays did it last year. Mays did $82 million questions. $70 million of it was for expansion. $12 million of it was for a new pool. The expansion passed, the pool didn't. Okay? So that's something that the board is looking at with their legal team. Can they do that at this kind of late stage in the process and make it two questions? So more to come on that. And lastly, I put this slide in there because, again, on social media, I see a lot of, well, the district is mismanaging its resources and the custodians aren't doing their jobs. And I thought this picture kind of sums that up nicely. This is here at Wilson, the cafetorinazium, because it's a little tiny room that you can actually, after this, walk down and take a look at. Think about this. In the morning, it's set up for kids to come in and have breakfast. And then that's got it, the tables have to be pushed to the walls, has to be cleaned up, and then they'll do a couple gym classes. Then the tables come out again for lunch. They have lunch, has to be put back away, swept up. Kids will have more gym classes. And then you might have a, you know, an assembly, an all-school assembly. Or maybe there's a children's performance that night, and you've got to set out 200 chairs. Maybe the reason the custodians aren't doing all the maintenance that exists out there, number one, because they don't have the money to do it, but number two, they don't have the time. Think about that. If you had to set up for a wedding party in your living room three times a day, how much time would you have to do anything else? It's crazy. That's where we're at with how we use the current schools we have. They just don't have the time to do these things. That's the pitch. That's the presentation. Any questions that perhaps I could answer, or certainly Dean could answer, about the bond issue or about the district in general?
If you do have questions, I want to hand you the mic so we can get those recorded. Questions, comments, anything?
I have a question. I see there's lots of updates to the building. Is there any update on getting out 25 kids in a classroom that's really starting to pinch at the sides? And so is there any expansion to classrooms?
The, the classrooms under the renovations and all those things that would be touched. This building in particular, we're looking at the small classrooms that we have, looking to see if we could expand, tear out a wall, something in the small ones in, down the hall here. But yeah, every classroom, some shape or form would be touched, whether it's lighting, flooring, doors, windows, those things. And then this building especially, the size of the classrooms is, is one of the biggest issues. And we would look at what we can do. We would have less, but with the addition, possibly be able to still have enough to--
If you're saying that you're going to have less, does that mean you're putting more kids in one classroom?
No, that, that wouldn't be the intent at all. To, whether it's the computer lab or whatever, whatever the need is, to have more space when you have 25 or 28 kids in a classroom that was designed for 18, with the desks, the technology, and everything else that we have, you can hardly maneuver, as you well know. So those are the things that we would take into consideration to make it a bigger square footage and not for the sake of just adding more kids in that one room. Other questions, comments, anything? All this information, and when Mike went through the, the tax information, all of that is on the webpage, and it's broken down from, I believe, $40,000 home all the way up to a $400,000 home. Farm ground, business, it's all broken down that way. So if you really want to get an idea of what we're talking about. The example Mike had has the bond being paid off in 20 years. We're looking at probably, if it's all property tax doing it, at 25 years, and it would lower that a little bit, but you pay five more years, more interest, those things. But those, those would be determined, obviously, later. But all that information is on the webpage. The drawings, a list of frequently asked questions. We keep adding to that. There's several pages of them now that we want everyone to be informed. This obviously was filmed. It'll be on YouTube and on the web. My long, boring presentation is also on there. I think Mike's probably going to win by far on a number of views, but all that information is there. If you do have questions or you run into somebody that has a question, please send them our way so we can get accurate information out and they know where they can get it and start spreading the word of what this entails. Again, you know, I can't sit here and tell you to vote yes, and that's why our volunteers are starting the campaign. I can give you facts, figures, everything, everything like that. If you have groups, church group, civic organization, just a coffee shop group, anyone that you think would be interested in hearing this presentation. We have several people, Mike's one, a few others that'll go around. I will. It wouldn't be this pitch that, that has vote yes and things. But to get information out, I don't care if it's 10 people, somebody will be there and visit with them. But we want to get that out. Question?
Yeah.
Did you get that? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Deve question. Where are we at with regards to the teachers' contracts? As my understanding, last year at Hayes Daily, there was a stalemate or an impasse declared. Where are we at with personnel issues?
We're voting tomorrow.
As of last night, you know, both sides came to an agreement. The teachers are voting tomorrow, you said. So, and then the board will meet the 21st and, and vote on that as well. So I, I thought it was probably the best session we've had. Had the mediator there and went exceptionally well. So I think we're, I think we're there.
I wanted, I'm sorry. I just wanted to leave with one last point that, that we should have touched on in the presentation but didn't. And that has to do with timing. That was the first question that we asked in this presentation. Why now, especially when commodity prices are, are not great, when oil prices are actually pretty low? And the reason, twofold. Number one is the fact that we keep accruing that deferred maintenance at about a half-million-dollar-a-year clip. But the other is, frankly, in terms of interest rates, this is about as good as it gets in terms of letting a bond. And the fact that it is a $94, sorry, $94 million bond is, is, is pretty staggering. But when you look back at what it costs to pay off a $5 million bond back when, 1977, interest rates, you know, I was seven at the time, so I didn't buy a car. But I remember my dad talking about it, and, you know, interest rates in the 18 and 20% range was not unheard of. Fast forward to 1993, when the second bond was done, you could get savings bonds at that time with a 6 and 1/4% interest rate on a savings bond. CDs were paying 8 and 9%, okay? So again, the cost of borrowing that money was very high. Today, for institutional money, you're looking at 3% or less. So in terms of, yeah, we've got this $94 million need out there. When do you pay for it? I understand on the supply side, it's, it's a little tight right now in terms of prices, but, but things eventually always turn. In terms of the, the interest rates, it's, it's really an optimum time to do something like this. So there may never be an ideal time for something of that size of $94 million, but interest rate-wise, now's pretty darn good. Any other questions? If, if you're interested, in a few weeks, there'll be yard signs being printed by the committee. If you'd like to have one, feel free to come down. Just put your name and address on there, and we'll make sure that somebody gets one out to you. We will be holding more meetings, as Dean said, with different groups and whatnot. And then we plan on having some more public meetings as the, the vote date, June 7th, comes closer. Probably every two weeks, we'll have a public meeting somewhere in Hayes, and we'll promote that to try to get more people informed and so they can make a good decision in the voting booth. But thank you very much for attending tonight. Appreciate it. Have a great evening.